Good morning, everybody. Welcome to today's City Planning Commission Public Hearing of July 27. My name is Dan Gorodnik, and I have the privilege of chairing this commission. Today, of course, is the day when we commissioners get to hear directly from members of the public on land use applications that are in public review. We're also going to vote on five specific projects. Four of them relate to the specific rules governing changes to single-family homes, garages, swimming pools, lot divisions, et cetera, in the great borough of Staten Island. The last, and it actually will be the first that we vote on, is a proposal in Long Island City that is to create housing and also in the process to provide ADA compliant access to the Queensborough Plaza subway station. The improvements will include new elevators, a more accessible entrance to the station that serves the N, W, and seven trains. This proposal, I will note, at 2501 Queens Plaza North is made possible as the property owners doing this through our recently adopted zoning for accessibility rules. Those rules allow for a building to add density if the owner provides ADA upgrades, and in this case, to one of our busiest subway stations in the city. It's the first time these rules would be applied outside of Manhattan, so it is notable for that. During the public hearing, we're going to hear from the public on three 100% affordable HPD projects in the Bronx, including one building in Morris Heights with some homeownership opportunities and one in Manhattan. We will also hear testimony on a new nine-story building in Gowanus on Ninth Street that would bring 48 new homes and ground floor commercial space to that neighborhood. So we're ready to go. Look forward to hearing from the public today on these proposals. But to start, we will go through the approval of the meeting minutes, scheduling for future hearings, and our votes. And I am going to ask Edwin to walk everyone through the process on how they may testify today if they are so inclined. So Edwin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Gorodnik. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, all. Thanks for joining us today. Verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak, you must register through the NYC Engage portal. If you wish to access the hearing, please register through the upcoming meetings page of NYC Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that no matter how you are accessing the meeting, you must first register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There'll be a short period where it'll appear that you're no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given a temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute the phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or four speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing is being recorded.
Excellent. Thank you, Edwin, very much. Good morning again to everybody. The secretary to go ahead and begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, July 27, 2022. I will now call the role Chair Gorodnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bozard.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Surulow.
Here.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, July 13, 2022, and of the special public meeting of Monday, July 25, 2022.
Thank you very much. The minutes, I make a motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers 1 through 13. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, August 10, 2022, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
Thank you. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, Madam Secretary.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page six. Reports, Borough of Queens, calendar number 14, 2501 Queens Plaza North, CD1 and 220359ZAQ in the matter of an application for the grant of authorization concerning 2501 Queens Plaza North for adoption on calendar number 14. Chair Gorodnik.
Would I?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozard.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Surulow.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes.
Calendar number 14 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 15, 58 Cromwell Circle, CD2, N 220194ZAR in the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 58 Cromwell Circle for adoption on calendar number 15. Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozard.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Surulow.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes.
Calendar number 15 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 16, 17, and 18. Calendar number 16, CD3, N 220333RCR, 43 Doyle Street. Calendar number 17, CD3, N 220349RCR, 25 Searl Avenue. Calendar number 18, CD3, N 220378RCR, 394 Stafford Avenue in the matter of applications for the grant of certifications concerning 43 Doyle Street, 25 Searl Avenue, and 394 Stafford Avenue for adoption on calendar numbers 16, 17, and 18. Chair Gorodnik.
Would I?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozard.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Surulow.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 16, 17, and 18 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page nine.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Again, we remind those who are testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes, after which time, unfortunately to say, you will be muted. And just want to remind you that if you would like to speak by livestream or phone, you need to register first. So if you missed the instructions at the top, please go to nyc.gov/engage for instructions on how to register to testify via the online livestream or by phone. So, Madam Secretary, if you would, please call that first item.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 19 and 20, 2017 Grand Concourse, CD5. Calendar number 19, C 220356HAX. Calendar number 20, C 220357PQX, Public Hearing in the Matter of an Application for UDOT Designation, Project Approval and Disposition of City-Owned Property and Acquisition Concerning 2017 Grand Concourse.
Excellent. Thank you. And we have a decent-sized applicant team here today. I'm going to share with you all of their names, and then I will turn it to them for a 10-minute presentation. Alice Friedman, Lina Saad, Ted Weinstein, Jay Fox, Crystal Eng, Mark Ginsberg, and Thompson Cow. So whenever you all are ready for 2017 Grand Concourse, the floor is yours, and welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can.
Am I presenting? Okay, excellent. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lena Saad, representing HPD. I'm joined by Jay Fox and Crystal Eng, representing the development team. They'll join me in this presentation. Next slide, please. Great. 2017 Grand Concourse is a 33-unit, 100% affordable new construction project with a supers unit in the Mount Hope neighborhood of the Bronx using HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program. The NCP program facilitates small-scale, affordable, mixed-income developments. The site is currently owned by Neighborhood Restore and was designated to Bronx Pro through the Third Party Transfer Program to renovate the vacant building on the site. But due to the existing conditions, it was determined to be too difficult to preserve. Therefore, a new construction project was proposed and approved by HPD. The site was also previously city-owned and disposed of for the purposes of rehabilitation in 1994 through an accelerated UDOT, and so requires a ULP to allow for the proposed project scope. And the ULP actions are here before you. Next slide, please. Great. So this came before Community Board Five on May 25, and the community board later voted to approve the application. A BP hearing was held on July 7, and Borough President Gibson later issued a recommendation to approve this project. Next slide. Great. Now I'll turn it over to Jay Fox from Bronx Pro.
Good morning. Bronx Pro Group is a mission-based, Bronx-based WBE. We've been doing property management and development in the Bronx, in this area of the Northwest Bronx, since 1988. We are leaders in passive house and sustainable construction and are aiming to make 2017 Grand Concourse also a highly sustainable development. We currently have 3,000 units developed and under management. I'm here, joined by Curtis and Ginsberg. Crystal Eng will be presenting with me. Mark Ginsberg, principal, is also available for questions. They're an award-winning WBE founded in 1990 and also experts in sustainable development and a longtime partner of Bronx Pro Group on our passive house buildings. Next slide, please. Okay, so this shows the location and the site context. You can see in the slide on the right that the site is located in the Grand Concourse Special District. It is indicated by the green highlight there. It should be noted, because this came up in some of the prior hearings, this site is not designated for commercial use under the Grand Concourse Special District, and therefore, none is proposed. In the slide on the left, on the location and site context, you can see the white outline of a building. That is the proposed 2017 Grand Concourse development. It is located on the corner of Grand Concourse and Bush Street. I should note that a question came up, I believe, from Commissioner Bernie during the review session regarding the setback. The building is built to the allowable property line on Bush Street. There is a 10-foot sidewalk between the edge of the building and the sidewalk. Sidewalk is over 10 feet wide. The picture makes it look as though the large building on Creston Avenue is substantially set back, but what you can't see is that the shadow from that building on Creston Avenue is overshadowing some small family homes along Bush Street that are actually built closer to the sidewalk. So it actually, we continue the sidewalk width and are built to the property line. Next slide, please. On the left, you can see the existing structure that is currently there, which will be demolished to build what we have on the right, which is a nine-story, 3,500 square foot building. And we have taken advantage of, to the best of our ability, of a small, narrow lot by using smaller-sized units, affordable studios, one- and two-bedroom units, and a supers unit. We are responding to the community's request to make sure that we're including a tier of 30% AMI units. Besides a homeless set aside, we will also be using the heiress program for a set aside for seniors. There is going to be lighting alongside. There is currently a street light that is not pictured in the rendering on the corner of Grand Concourse and Bush. This will be supplemented by downlighting both at the entrance on Grand Concourse as well as along the side of the building on Bush Street, so that we will leave the site better lit than it currently is. We've also really made an attempt to continue all of the design features of the Grand Concourse, although that's obviously not actually a part of the Grand Concourse Special Use District requirements. We can go to the next slide. Crystal, would you like to describe the exterior details, please?
Yeah, sounds good. So as we understand, the history of the Grand Concourse does have a lot of these art deco motifs and buildings in it. So that's kind of one of the inspirations of the building design. We have for the general building materials, a light tan color brick accented by horizontal banding that is gray. That breaks up the massing with also these vertical gray elements. Also, along the street front, we have a canopy that will have some ornament to it and some stridations, horizontal stridations that we have on the overall upper parts are carried along in the entrance and ample light into the lobbies. And then we do have the exercise room, as you can kind of see in this bottom right, along the street front. And to provide some privacy, we're also proposing a decorative art deco-inspired window film that can prevent some of the views from the street to the interior of the space. Next slide, please. And then this is the overall roof plan. There will be a residential roof terrace on the roof. We'll go through the floor plans in the next few slides to look at the laundry, bike storage, and exercise room that will be also on property. Next slide. So in the cellar space, the laundry room is directly adjacent to the elevator for convenience. The residents do also have a bike storage in the cellar, indicated by the blue. Next slide. The entry is right off of Grand Concourse. There's a little bit of space for people if they're waiting for, you know, a taxi to take them for a couch that they could wait in and as well as that exercise room I described earlier. Next slide. Oh, sorry. The supers unit is also on the ground floor. It is a two-bedroom unit. And then there is a one-bedroom, I mean, a studio on the ground floor as well. Because of the slope of Bush Street, they're actually quite elevated from the sidewalk for privacy.
And buffered by a plant.
Yes. Next slide. And the typical floor plan has studios through two bedrooms. The typical plan has one studio, two one-bedrooms, and a two-bedroom. Next slide. And I'll turn it back to you, Jay.
Yeah. So here you can see very quickly the range of incomes and unit types that we've incorporated. We've responded to the communities and the council members. We've had extensive conversations with them and have run all of these numbers past HPD. These reflect 2022 AMIs, you know, and this is where we're aiming to be with units, eight units set aside for formerly homeless seniors, a tier of 30% available to the general population, a larger tier at 50% of AMI, and also 70% and 80% as well. Bronx Pro Group feels that this is really important in order to ensure good income mixing and healthy communities. We have great experience with mixing folks of various affordable housing tiers and incomes in our properties. Next slide. There we go.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make, just confirm one point, and then I will turn to my colleagues here. The existing building that is set to be demolished here, that is vacant. It has no residents. Nothing has happened in there right now. Is that right?
No. Yes, it is fully vacant. There is a, it is a derelict building. We had looked at the possibility of trying to rehab and renovate it. It was not feasible. And there is also a derelict garage structure adjacent to it as well. That's a part of the property, and they would both be demolished in order to build the 34 units of housing.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, I understand the income eligibility requirements, but how do you, what's the process for ultimately selecting each occupant of this building, or what would be this building?
That is an excellent question. We use and are required to use the city's Housing Connect 2 portal, run by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. And we do our own marketing, I should add. We do, we are a certified HPD marketing agent. We do the development. We do the property management. We do, and the construction. We do the whole thing. And so we really do care about making sure that we're in full compliance with everything that the city is asking us to do under the Housing Connect. I believe there's a 50% set aside still for community residents, a preference. There are also set asides for folks with mobility and hearing and visually impaired, 2% and 5%. And we would be, and we're experienced with setting aside those units and would make sure that we're marketing it in full compliance with the city, and it will just be by lottery.
So when you say community...
Oh, sorry. I should mention, I'm so sorry. The eight, I do need to mention, the eight units that are set aside for formerly homeless seniors are also referred by HPD, but they come through a non-lottery process. Those are the only units that would not be through the lottery, but they come through, I believe HPD gets a set aside from, gets referrals through DHS. They funnel it through HPD homeless, and that comes to us as well. And then we work with the folks that they propose. Sorry, I did want to clarify that.
And when you mentioned community preference, I assume you mean community board?
Yes, we do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Ms. Fox, you had mentioned about you guys see the whole job through. Can you speak a little bit more to the timeline of the project, when you anticipate construction to begin or the demo to begin construction, when you think the units will come online?
Oh, boy. Okay, so this depends a little bit on, we're working with HPD to determine the start date for construction. Assuming this goes through on the timeline that we anticipate, and there is a city council vote in September, we believe that we would close in the next HPD construction closing time after that, which would most likely be June and probably not December, although, boy, would we love to make that deadline. If we did, then it'll be either, it'll be approximately 27 months from either December or December of 2022, which would be very aggressive, or 27 months from June of 2023, which is frankly, more likely, all things considered. And then we have found that there's approximately a nine-month process, which I know sounds extensive, to get the building fully rented up under the current New York City Housing Connect process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Bozard.
Hi, folks. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to congratulate the whole team, Ted, Lena, the development team. I know these sites can be incredibly challenging to develop, design, finance, given their size. I know it's been many years, so wanted to say hello. Ted, I like seeing you floating out there in space with your background and just say congrats to the whole team.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, great. Well, I'm going to thank the applicant team for the presentation. Join Commissioner Bozard in her congrats to you all for your work on this. And I will note that I do not see members of the public wishing to testify on this item. So if there is anyone who wishes to speak, now is the moment. Seeing none, we will close the hearing on the first item today, 2017 Grand Concourse. Thank you all. We're going to move on to the next. I'm going to ask the calendar officer to call the next item.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 21, Morris Heights, NCP, CD5, C 220381HAX, Public Hearing in the Matter of an Application for UDOT Designation, Project Approval, and Disposition of City-Owned Property Concerning Morris Heights, NCP.
Terrific. So on calendar 21, we have another applicant team. I'm going to share all of their names, and then I'm going to turn it to them. Alice Friedman, Winifred Campbell, Mary Ellen Cooper, Ted Weinstein, Sandra Erickson, Jack Coogan, William Bollinger, and Joshua Weissman. Whenever you're ready, you can go right ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Winifred Campbell, representing HPD. We are here to present a ULP application for proposed buildings to be developed on city-owned lots in Bronx Community District 5. I'm joined here today by other representatives from HPD and from members of the development team, and they will introduce themselves either when they present or if needed, when they answer questions. Next slide, please. The city-owned sites are located at 30 West 182nd Street and 1647 Popham Avenue. The sites will be developed as affordable rental housing through HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program, and they are part of a scattered site development project that spans six Bronx community districts. This cluster is made up of 12 development sites, and they total 78 units. The cluster is one of the winning proposals for requests for qualifications that invited applicants to submit proposals to develop clusters of small infill sites that were otherwise too small or too difficult to build on their own. The ULP actions before you today are UDOT Designation, Project Approval, and the Disposition of City-Owned Properties. Next slide, please. The ULP for this project was certified on the 9th. The community board voted its approval in June, and the Bronx Borough President provided favorable recommendations on July 15. It is our hope to keep the momentum going, and with approval from this body, and we anticipate being before the city council in September. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Bill Bollinger, representing... At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Bill Ballinger, representing the development team.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present this project to everybody. Like Winnie said, my name is Bill Ballinger. I'm with J. Cal Development Group. I'm a principal there, joined with my partner Joshua Weisman, president of the company, who's also be available for questions. Josh generally handles the construction aspects of that very meticulous. And any question relating to that or hiring MWB compliance, Josh can handle. Our other development partner here is Sandra Erickson. Sandra is a longtime Bronx-based property manager and developer. She's located not far from here on Clay Avenue. She's been practicing in a long time. I won't say the number of years in the Bronx, a long time, as, as by both, I should mention, Josh and I. Our offices are located in the Bronx as well, in the Ma Haven section of the borough. We're also joined here by OCV Architects. And while they're not Bronx-based, that's okay. They've done a lot of work in the Bronx and they've done a lot of work focusing on affordable housing. And we're joined by Jack Coogan, and I'll turn it over to Jack because we have two sites here that he's going to have to run through and walk you guys through the development of it. Thank you. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Ah, that was supposed to be there. Anyway, next slide, please. Jack, you want to take them through this now?
Morning, everyone. Jack Coogan, OCV Architects. This is an aerial view of the site, which shows our property, which is a 25-foot lot located in between, in the middle of the street. Next slide, please. As you can see from the street view, it's a narrow lot. It's 25 feet wide, as I mentioned. It's hard up against a potty-lined wall of the adjacent building on the left side. And there's a small yard and building on the right side. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of our proposed development. It's a six-story building. And it is adjacent to another six-story building and we have planted in brick. It is going to be of sustainable passive house design standards, highly insulated, high-performance envelope on walls and roof and windows. It's going to be an all-electric building with electric heat pump for heating and cooling. Next slide, please. Here is the floor plan of the cellar, first of all. The cellar shows certain amenities in the building, which are bike storage and a common rear yard, which is going to be in the back of the building. This can be for the use of all the residents in the building. There's also a tenant laundry room. And then the service areas, there's tenant storage, compact room, and utilities. As you can see, the cellar is serviced by a passenger elevator and a staircase. The elevator goes to all six floors plus the cellar. Next slide, please. Here we see on the lower portion, the lower plan is the first floor plan. You enter the building through a large vestibule. Everything is handicapped accessible. Everything is ungrade. From the lobby, there is a accessible passenger elevator and a one-bed, oh, sorry, a two-bedroom apartment on the ground floor plan. Above is the typical floor plan. This is floors two through six. And on the typical floor plan, there are one-bedroom apartments in the front and a one-bedroom apartment in the back. So the total development is 11 units, one of which is a two, the rest are one-bedroom apartments. Next slide, please. The next site is also in the middle of the block. It's at 1647 Popem Avenue. It's a mid-block site. This one's a little bit wider. It's 50 feet wide. Next slide, please. And here are ground views showing the adjacent property. It's a flat site and vacant at this time. And we're proposing a six-story building on this site. Next slide, please. And this is a rendering of our proposed building. Again, we're using multiple, multicolored brick to try to break up mass on the facade. And we have rain screen on the sides and rear. Again, it's a highly insulated envelope, both walls, roofs, and windows. Again, it's all electric. It will be electric heat pump for heating and cooling. Next slide, please. This is the first floor plan. The building is entered at the top of your drawing through a vestibule. Again, it's a six-story building with a passenger elevator to all the floors. There's a large yard in the back, which is the landscape for use by all the residents in the building. And that is accessed through a common laundry room for all tenants. On this floor, we have a two-bedroom apartment in the front and a two-bedroom apartment at the rear. Next slide, please. Again, all apartments are accessible. Building's completely compliant with UFS. The building is also compliant with Enterprise Green Community Standards and Energy Standards. On this drawing, you'll see two plans. The one on the left is the cellar floor plan. There are amenities there for the tenants, bicycle storage, and a, a large storage room for the residents. To the right is the typical, I'm sorry, it's the typical floor plan. And this plan has three apartments on a typical floor, floors two through six. They are two, two bedrooms and a one-bedroom. That will give us a total building count of 17 units, 12 of which are two-bedroom and five of which are one-bedroom apartments. There's a trans- compactor and recycling room on these floors as well. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Jack. So here you'll take a look at the proposed income bands and income limits for the project. You'll notice that we are targeting 25% of the units at 40% and below. As far as the lower income bands, we have a middle income band at the 50% level. And then we have a few at the higher income bands, about 10% of the units at that level. So this, this is, we think, a nicely, a very affordable project and building for the neighborhood. And with that, I'll say next slide. So that includes, we're available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Let me see if there are questions from the commission. I do not have any. Questions, comments? Okay. Great. Well, thank you all. We appreciate it. Wish you best of luck in this. Make it easy for us. So thank you. Let me note here, hold on a second. I see Ryan Moros. Is he part of your applicant team? He is, right? Okay, got it. All right. Great. So we do not see members of the public wishing to testify on this item. And I will note that it has the approval of both Community Board Five and also the Borough President. So congratulations on that. And with that, we will close the hearing on calendar 21, which was the Morris Heights NCP. So thank you all very much for being here today. And I'm going to ask the calendar officer to call the third public hearing item today, calendar 22.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 22, Morrisonia Open Door, CD3C220380HAX. Public hearing in the matter of an application for UDAP designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Morrisonia Open Door.
Great, thank you. Let me introduce the applicant team here. Alice Friedman, Rosa Negron, Salvatore Davola, Winifred Campbell, Mary Ellen Cooper, Ted Weinstein, Sandra Erickson, and Jack Coogan. Some familiar names here. So welcome back. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning again, Commissioners. I'm excited to present to you a ULEURP application for a proposed 23-unit co-op building located at 1312-1314 Chisholm Street in Bronx Community District 3. This co-op will be developed through HPD's Open Door Program. After years of developing low-income housing in this district, we are excited to be able to expand homeownership and provide opportunities for residents with moderate income. Next slide, please. The Open Door Program site is one of 12 scattered sites, as I discussed in the previous presentation, that comprise the Morrisonia-Morris Heights Cluster. The cluster will provide approximately 78 units across six community districts in the Bronx. The ULEURP actions will be voting on, again, our UDAP designation, project approval, and the disposition of city-owned property. Next slide, please. As with the earlier project, the ULEURP for this project was certified on May the 9th. The Community District 3 voted to approve the project in June and the Bronx VP provided a favorable recommendation on July the 15th. And I already expressed our hope for a favorable vote from this commission. And we also anticipate this project being before the city council in September. I will now turn, next slide, please. I will now turn the presentation to Bill Ballinger.
Thank you, Winnie. And thank you again, Commissioners. Good to see you as well. I, unless there's further record, I won't really speak about our development team, other than to note that we're also joined in this project by Restored Homes, which is an affiliate of Neighborhood Restore, Restored Homes HFC. And within this project, they will be our, our partner holding title to the property that allows us to have an Article 11 tax abatement. They also will be doing the marketing of the units and providing homeowner assistance through that first, that first year period, which of course can be the biggest trial. And they'll be available for questions as far as, and that you may have when we get to the marketing side of this. Next slide, please. I will now turn this back over to our architect of this, OCV Architects, and Jack, so he can walk you through this project as well. Thank you. Jack, are you there?
I'm muted, Jack.
Sorry, folks. Thank you. Okay, good morning. Again, we have an aerial view of the site on Chisholm Street. And you can see the rectangle outlined in orange is our site. It's a flat vacant site in the middle of the street. Next slide, please. The next slide shows you the street view, that it is a flat site and it is presently used as a parking lot. Next slide, please. And this is a rendering of our proposed building on the site. Again, it's a six-story building. It's planted in brick on the street facade with some treatment to break the massing down horizontally, vertically, and on the sides, we are going to plant it in a composite rain screen. Again, it's highly insulated, built to passive house standards. And with regard to the roof and wall insulation and windows, it is an all-electric building in terms of HVAC. It'll have electric heat pumps for heating and cooling. That will be controlled by the tenants, the owners, actually. Next slide, please. The next slide is of the of the cellar floor plan, or sorry, the first floor plan. And this shows the building is on-grade and fully accessible. You enter through the vestibule to a large public hall area where there is mailboxes. Walk through past those. There's a tenant laundry room for the residents and a bike storage room and access to a large landscaped rear yard. Before, there are two, two-bedroom apartments as well, on the first floor, and a trash compact room. Next slide, please. On this floor, we'll see the cellar floor plan is on the left side. And down there, there's a large exercise room for the residents. And there's also a storage room for the tenants as well, as well as utility spaces for the building itself. On the right hand side is the typical floor plan. And as you can see, there are four apartments per floor. There are two, two, two bedrooms and two one-bedrooms per floor. That gives us, and that floor is two, six. That gives us a total of 23 units for the building. There's one studio apartment at the ground floor level. There are 11 one-bedrooms and 11 two-bedrooms. And now I'll turn it back on, over to Bill.
Hi, thank you, Jack. Next slide, please. So here you'll see the anticipated sales prices, the projected down payments, the mortgage amounts. And, and off to the right, you'll see what we think is probably one of the most attractive things of this all is the estimated monthly mortgage and housing costs, which includes the maintenance and CAM charges as well, which we think is, is quite affordable to, to neighborhood residents. And, and that's, that's obviously our goal as far as the marketing of it. I don't know if we, if, Rose, if you want to kind of walk through the marketing of that, or you wanted to handle that in the Q and A. But, but if you want, we'll go to next slide, please. And that's our presentation. So we have people from Neighborhood Restore who can walk us through the, the marketing process. If you like, at that time, or they can do it right now, too, if you have time. Oh, they're not part of the team, though. Sorry about that. All right. So, so obviously, we're excited about the project. We think it's a great opportunity. There's a lot of homeownership that was built over the years in the neighborhood through the Partnership Housing Program. And, and we think that, you know, the Community Board was extremely excited about it. A lot of members on the board who are kind of negative, a lot of projects coming in, were very excited about it. And the Borough President's office also gave a favorable recommendation. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And there may be questions from the commission. Let me just, let me note, I went and paid a visit out to the site myself, which if you, if you know the City Planning Commission's, Department of City Planning's social media, you might have seen you know, a, a short video on that. And I think it's certainly a site that is worthy of this sort of development. So we're, I, I will speak to myself when I say that I'm excited about, about this. I really have a question for HPD about homeownership versus the other models that you employ here. Because we're, we're talking about a few different projects even today with a few different concepts and models. How do you think about the process of which site would be most suitable for the homeownership model as opposed to the other options that you have at your disposal? Could you just say a little bit about that?
Am I on?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry, sorry. I can speak.
Oops, you just muted yourself, I think.
Sorry about that. It gets me first from a planning point of view, and I guess Alice, maybe from the financing point of view. This is an area which, for those who know in Chiara, as you saw, it has a lot of homeownership. But Community District 3 in the Bronx was really devastated, you know, during the 1970s and 80s. You know, between those two census, they lost almost, a net loss of almost 100,000 people. They were hit really badly. And this site is only a few blocks away from the And this site is only a few blocks away from the Charlotte Gardens complex, for example. And so for a long time, what we did do in this area was small home development, until the private financing sources were more willing to go multifamily. So just walking down the block from here, you'll see homes that were built either through our partnership program or our new foundations program. So there is a lot of low-density homeownership in this area. But one of the things that we've been striving to do for many years, somewhat pushed aside by the national mortgage crisis of 2009, was to encourage multifamily homeownership. And so when we had, and we actually had tried to do some low-rise homeownership here first. But if you saw, it's raised, there's a lot of rock there. And so for small homes, it was considered to be a little difficult to do. And so we decided when we had this opportunity to do a lot of infill sites scattered around, we thought that this would be, one, a good site to include, and, two, to do it as homeownership, given that there is already low-density homeownership. Not everybody wants to own a home, not everybody wants to, you know, do the plumbing themselves and, you know, mow the lawn and things like that. And so we've been striving to really try to get more multifamily homeownership. And so we just thought this was a good one, given that what's surrounded.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to acknowledge my colleagues in the affordable housing world and say thank you, because we do need more affordable homeownership in the Bronx. And this is certainly something, as Ted mentioned, that is very welcome in a neighborhood that historically has tried to develop for-sale affordable homeownership. So thank you for that. I had a specific question on Monday, when we did this review regarding the term sheet and which term sheet you were using. Was it the newer term sheet? Was it the older term sheet? So that's one question. I don't know if you're ready to answer that one. Why don't we stop there? I have two others. So why don't we stop there? And if we can get that answer, that would be great.
Hi, Commissioner, Alice Friedman from HPD Program. We will be using the currently published open-door term sheet, which allows for the resale cap, the appreciation cap on resale and things of that nature. So the currently published open-door term sheet.
Got it. Thank you, Alice. And my other two questions, I think, may go to the architect. Two things. One is that in this, in one of the, in this specific building, I noticed that outside of the gym area, there's what I perceive to be a light well. And I will assume there are some area drains down there for proper drainage of rain and things like that. Is there any way to access that area to clean it? Or is that a closed-off area that would be accessible by a window?
It can be accessed by a door or a window. There are four openings onto it, or three?
Yeah, I couldn't tell by the fenestration if they were sliding doors or not.
Yeah, one will be a door, just to, and it's only for access, as you say, to clean it out occasionally.
That's correct.
And sure the drains are clear. That's to bring some light down into that space since that would be, hopefully, a well-utilized space.
Absolutely understood. And then my second question would be about the layout of the backyard and access. So I see that you have a paved area, and you also have a grassy area. And I also see sort of what seems to be a demarcation of a wall. Would those two areas be separated? Or is that one complete area that's accessible to all the tenants?
That's, that's one area. I guess that's a curb, the double line there is actually a curb between the planted area and the terrace. And, you know, there's not, nothing's actually still, we're still going to go through further development. But we want to create some privacy for the apartments that face out on that side. So we put the terrace area by where the lobby and the laundry is and where the resident apartments are. We have some planted areas up in front of that, along the light. That was a thing from there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edie?
All right. Good afternoon. You may have covered this, but given that it's a co-op, I just wanted to confirm. From what I saw, there is no underlying mortgage on the building. Is that correct? And given the structure, is that precluded from being done in the future?
Alice Friedman from HPD Program. So there'll be no underlying private mortgage on the building. There will be underlying HPD debt on the building as a enforcement mechanism to ensure the building complies with the regulatory agreement. That being said, each individual shareholder will have a private mortgage.
Right. And just to follow up quickly. And that HPD mortgage, is that being repaid through the the common charges or the?
No, there's no, there's no debt.
Repayment.
There's no, and there's no monthly or annual debt service on the HPD mortgage. And currently, in our program, it is forgiven at the end of the 40-year period.
Got it. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozard.
Hey, I know this was offered at the end of the presentation, but I do think it'd be helpful to hear a little bit about the marketing plans for the project and how, just the process for kind of lease-up and the type of, I guess it's not called lease-up, but for sale and the types of supports offered through that process for first-time homebuyers.
Hi, my name is Rosa Negron with Neighborhood Restore. Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. We will be handling the marketing, and they will all be marketed through Housing Connect 2.0. They will start marketing once the units are, the building is 70% complete. There will be online and paper applications available. We will also be hosting sessions on how to sign up for Housing Connect 2.0. And then after the lottery is over, we will then have, meet with the applicant, either virtually or face-to-face, to verify their income, assets, credit, and then assist them in applying for a mortgage.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Rosa, just to add to that question a little bit. So if you're a first-time homebuyer, making up to 80% median income, you can get an apartment here for $300,000 plus or minus. Is that, first of all, are there a lot of people in that category? And second of all, is there any history of defaults on these mortgages? How does that, how does that work out in the market?
So all the applicants must obtain first-time homebuyer education. That's mandatory. And they are provided with a list should they hit a hiccup along the way on who to contact, because the lenders are somewhat conservative in what they have to put down and what the limits are, their credit history, all that. The default is very low.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay, I see none. So I'm going to thank the applicant team for your time today and your attention to this. And certainly wish you well on this. And let's see, I do not see members of the public wishing to testify on this item. So we will close the hearing on calendar number 22. And I'm going to thank you all again. And I'm going to ask the Secretary to open the third public hearing, I'm sorry, the fourth public hearing, and call the next item.
Thanks.
Chair of Manhattan, calendar numbers 23 through 26, 705 10th Avenue DEP Site. CD4, calendar number 23, C220340HAM. Calendar number 24, C220339ZRM. Calendar number 25, C220338ZSM. Calendar number 26, C220337ZSM. Public hearing in the matter of an application for UDAP designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property, zoning text amendment, and special permits concerning 705 10th Avenue DEP Site.
Great. Thank you very much. We have an applicant team here and a few members of the public wishing to testify. Let's start with the applicant team, which includes Melissa Otten, Joel Kolkman, Felipe Cortez, Daniel Arnau, and Sorab Genka. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced anybody's names, but you should feel free to correct me when you come on. Floor is yours. Applicant team, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Grodnik, Vice Chair Knuckles and City Planning Commissioners. My name is Melissa Otten, and I am a senior planner with Manhattan Planning Division at the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I'm joined by representatives of our, from our development partners, Juggleston Development and the Entertainment Community Fund. I am pleased to testify in support of this ULP action, which will facilitate the development of a mixed-use project referred to as 705 10th Avenue, or the DEP Site, or also known as Rialto West. The proposed development includes the new construction of an eight-story building with a total of 157 units that are permanently affordable, plus one superintendent's unit, as well as ground-floor community facility space. The site is located at 705 10th Avenue, between West 48th and 49th Streets, and is currently city-owned. Next slide, please. The land use actions needed to facilitate the proposed project include urban development action area designation and urban development action area project approval, disposition of an easement for the purposes of light and air and for the transfer of approximately 39,590 square feet development rates. Zoning text amendment to establish a new City Planning Commission Special Permit Section to consolidate the existing special permit provision under Section 96104 for height and setback, and additional allowance for other bulk modifications applicable to the site. Special permit percent to the proposed ZR 96112 to modify height and setback and modify rear yard requirements, as well as a special permit percent to ZR 74681 to develop the urban Amtrak railcar right-of-way. With that said, I will now turn the presentation over to Joel Kolkman of Juggleston Development.
All right, and next slide. Thanks, Melissa, and thank you, Chair Grodnik, and thank you, Commissioners, for having us today. So the proposed Rialto West project will be, will include 158 permanently affordable units. And again, as Melissa said, that's 157 residential units with one super's unit. In accordance with the Western Milliards Points Agreement, which this site was subject to an association with the Western Milliards rezoning, our unit mix complies with the requirement that 50% of the units be two- and three-bedrooms. That breakdown, as you see here, is 23% studios, 27% one-bedrooms, 41% two-bedrooms, and 9% three-bedroom units. Amenities within the building will include onsite laundry, a fitness room, and a bike room. And as this site is being constructed over an open Amtrak right-of-way, all these amenities will be located on the ground floor of the building. So nothing would be in a cellar, because there is no cellar. Adjacent to our project site will be an approximately 25,000-square-foot publicly accessible open space that will be maintained by the Parks Department. And that portion of the site will still be owned by DEP. But to support that open space, our project will include, on the ground floor, a public comfort station. And in addition to that comfort station, there will be some storage space for gardening tools and other storage needs for the maintenance staff. And we also have an approximately 6,000-square-foot arts and cultural community facility space that supports the vibrant arts uses that we see here in Hell's Kitchen. And my colleague, Daniel Arnau, from the Entertainment Community Fund, will speak more to that. And next slide, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Joel. In response to the community board's concerns with the loss of artist studios, displacement of working artists, and the need for commercial space for arts and cultural organizations, we're thrilled to partner with IndieSpace as the community facility tenant. IndieSpace serves the independent theater community by providing affordable creative space for a diverse group of performing artists. For this project, IndieSpace will also partner with Artist Co-op and Waterwell Theater as sub-tenants. And these are two organizations that have operated in the district and are really in need of long-term sustainable space. So we hope this is really a solution for them. Waterwell will also dedicate one of the rehearsal spaces to its partnership with the Professional Performing Arts School, which is right down the street on 48th Street. I think we'll be joined by Paul Leibowitz, a co-founder of the organization, later in the testimony, so you can hear more about IndieSpace. We're thrilled to have them on board, and thank you. Back to you, Joel.
All right. Thanks, Daniel. And next slide. All right, so to finance this project, we are using the HPD Mix and Match Program. And this is a program that allows for buildings to have housing for households at a range of incomes, which you could see reflected in this chart here. So we have the, you know, required 15% of the units in the project will be available to formerly homeless households. This is a requirement for all affordable housing projects seeking or using city subsidy. Then we have 25% of the units serving households earning 50% of AMI, 20% of the units serving households at 80% of AMI, 30% of the households, of the units serving households at 120% of AMI, and finally, 10% of the units serving households at 130% of AMI. And we want to note here that responding to feedback from the community, we added this highest AMI tier at the 130% level. We cleared, we before had only up to 120%. The community was calling for more moderate middle-income housing connected to this project. And so we increased the AMI levels to respond to that request. Next slide, please. Great. So our building will rise 77 feet tall on eight stories. And again, this is in accordance with the provisions of the Western Milliards Points of Agreement. The building is designed by S9 Architecture. And we're very happy to say that, you know, prior to and up until now, at this point in the ULP process, the design has been very well-received. So we're excited about that. And in S9's, you know, work in designing this project, they really wanted to pull from the more industrial character that you see in the west side, and particularly a little farther west of the project site. So they did this by, you know, using a brick facade, having large loft-like windows. They also wanted to use a mix of materials. So you see the brick and metal panel portions of the facade here. And one of the big reasons for that was to help make, mix the scale of the building. And so you could see, as you're looking on 48th Street here, that the brick portions of the facade go up to six stories and kind of align with the neighboring buildings and creating a more contextual feel. And then the metal panel portions are rising above that, again, to break up that massing and create a more contextual look. And then finally, sustainability. Our building is complying with the Enterprise Green Communities 2020 Program as well as the Energy Star Multifamily New Construction Program. Next slide, and I think that's everything. And we're happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so let me just pose a couple of questions here. So the, the site, the area right in front of the building is DEP, because above the water tunnel, is that right?
That's correct.
But the plan here is for this to become a city park, and the Parks Department will manage it, or it will remain DEP? Well, actually, let me, let me just pose that open-ended question. What's the story? How is it going to work? How will this public space be overseen and stewarded?
Yes. Melissa, do you want to take that?
Sure. Yes, it's a good question. So the open-space portion of the site will remain under city ownership. It will be under DEP's jurisdiction. It will be constructed with an open space to be maintained and operated by the Department of Parks. Parks and DEP already have an MOU in place that outlines each agency's responsibilities there. And then, of course, HPD, Parks, and DEP have all been coordinating very closely on the design aspects and as well as our individual roles.
Okay, got it. And there was existing UDAP authority here for the development portion of the lot. But one of the actions here is to expand that authority to include the entire lot here. As I understand it, that relates to this open space. Is that, is that correct?
Right, right. So previously, the UDAP approval was just for the affordable housing portion of the site. At the time, in 2009, DEP was actually still using the open space portion of the site, or what we're calling the open space portion of the site for construction staging for that water tunnel number three. So, you know, they, they still were using it. And then the plan was for that area to stay under city ownership that, so that DEP could access that water tunnel infrastructure. And then for Parks to be able to construct and utilize it as an open space. As we were coordinating on these two projects, the affordable housing and the, and the open space project, we realized that, well, first of all, the new UDAP is for two purposes. The first is that there's an easement that is proposed that's needed for the transfer of some development rights to the affordable housing site, as well as for the benefit of light and air for the building. And the second reason the new UDAP is proposed is that when we were, you know, speaking with Parks and DEP about the two projects and delivering them most expeditiously, it was determined that the best way to do that would be for the project sponsor, for the affordable housing site, to construct the open space. That way we could coordinate construction timelines and if possible, do concurrent development.
Okay. Okay. All right. That makes sense. I'd like you to address some of the, and I say you, this is to whoever is most appropriate here. The recommendations that were made by the Community Board. There were some very specific thoughts and recommendations, including replacing the special permit for the non-FAR bulk waivers with a text amendment that would exempt this site. And the other one that is before the council from some of the bulk regulations, do the rear yard waiver through the railroad right-of-way special permit. And also to have moderate and middle income AMIs. I just wanted to see, and there are some others, but I do want to focus you on those, those three. Can you address and react to that as to, you know, if your thinking is different, why your thinking is different, what the practical elements are here, or anything that you would say in response to those concerns?
Yeah. How about, I'll start with the, kind of the second comment. Could do a little out of order here, but the second comment regarding the modification of the rear yard equivalent. You know, our land use council, which is Nick Hawkins at Greenberg Scharrig and us, we looked through a lot of precedents of other projects and even projects in CB4 and Special Platoon District that used that special permit pursuant to 74681. And they all had additional act, at least the precedents we saw, all had additional actions to modify other bulk regulations, including rear yard equivalent. And it's our, our belief that 74681, you are not, it's not, you can't modify those other bulk regulations through that special permit mechanism. And so that would be the need for a, another way to modify the building, the rear yard equivalent here, which again, is necessary to maximize the number of affordable housing units that this project can generate. Otherwise, you would have to basically have two wings of a building with like a ground floor connector. So that, that addresses that question. The AMI, I'll just jump to the AMI question because I think maybe Melissa, you might want to answer the broader text question. But, um, you know, the, the, this is, the AMI question is response, is in response to the community's concerns regarding the Western Milliards Points of Agreement and moderate and middle income housing there. And we've had a lot of conversations with them. And, and that is why we've made the modifications to increase the AMIs up to that 130% level throughout the project. And, and it really comes down to, you know, needing to generate low-income housing tax credit equity to make this project financially feasible. Again, we're building over an Amtrak right-of-way. We're, you know, creating, we're building a platform and then building this housing on top of that. And it's a very expensive project and requires a lot of resources, both on the tax credit side, also city subsidy. And, and kind of the way we have the income mix now is, is trying to balance all of those resources best that we possibly can.
Yeah. And I'll just add here, just quickly on the AMIs, you know, we heard this, this opinion that they would like to see AMIs 80% and above. You know, right now, our mix is 60% of our units would fall into that category. We are using, we're utilizing the mix and match term sheet, which most closely is in line with what the Community Board is requesting. And as Joel said, this is a very expensive project to build. So, you know, we have to utilize sources outside of city capital in order to make this feasible. On the special permit specifically, not related to the rear yard request, but to the other special permit request. So this land use action is actually tied to another application with Delirio, which the CPC has previously heard. And we've, we've heard the Community Board's concerns. So we are working to see if we can update those land use actions with Delirio. And if that does happen, then, you know, this is tied to it. So, you know, that answer is forthcoming.
Okay.
Actually, if I can add to that, right, as you know, as Melissa mentioned, this is connected to the Deliri application, which is currently going through City Council. Actually, the vote today is happening for that project. So as Melissa mentioned, the special permit is part of the negotiations with the council member. This could change and, you know, we'll keep you up to date on how that progressed. But this could get modified for this application as a result of the Deliri vote.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. We're keeping an eye on that too as well. So thank you. And obviously this project does remind, should remind all of us the complexity of doing anything in New York City. The idea of building affordable housing on top of a railroad right-of-way, open space on top of a water tunnel that is jointly managed by two city agencies as a result of necessity here. Okay. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Bozard.
Hey, I have a question about the AMIs as well. I heard Joel, you said that you added this tier of 130 to be responsive to some of the requests. Where did those units come from? Which of the tiers did you pull from to add that tier?
Yeah, we had previously had more units in the 120 AMI tier. So we pulled from that.
Okay. I, I, I do just want to acknowledge the tough spot you're in and also just the need. I know that the city in general has heard overall as well about how hard it can be to build and finance units below 60% AMI in Manhattan neighborhoods at times. So I know you were talking about the need to generate long-term housing tax credit equity, but it's also, I think, important to acknowledge the need generally to have units that go through the lottery and for the general public at some of those deeper levels. I know that's, that's not an issue just for this project, but in general in Manhattan can be very challenging. So I want to acknowledge that the spot you all are in and, and that importance citywide in general.
That's right, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's see if there's other questions here, comments. Okay. I don't see any. So I will thank the applicant team for joining us today. We appreciate it. We'll look forward to following up with you on this item. And I'm now going to turn to public testimony on calendars 23 to 26, 705 10th Avenue. And I am going to first call Paul Devlin from Manhattan Community Board Four. Mr. Devlin, whenever you are set up and ready to go, we would be delighted to hear you for three minutes and we'll start whenever you do.
Thank you. I'll just unmuting myself. As stated, I'm Paul Devlin. I'm co-chair of Hell's Kitchen Land Use of Community Board Four. I'm joining JD and Joe who will offer more testimony following me. I'd like to lead off our collective testimony by pointing out an issue that many of you have heard from us just three months ago at our testimony regarding the development of the MTA site, the Delirio site you've been discussing. We remain distressed that we are here pointing out that our government and elected officials have turned their backs on our community by cherry picking from an agreement that was signed in 2009 to bring housing to our neighborhood that includes a wide range of incomes and only choosing the points of agreement that work for this immediate crisis. Although we appreciate the hard work Douglasson has been doing to develop a strong development with arts community mind and with higher income bands than originally proposed, we remain concerned about the process which got us to today's proposal. There was a 2009 Western Milliards Point of Agreement that is about preserving the economic diversity of the district and to foster diverse livable neighborhoods with mixed income housing and the necessary supporting services. This mix of housing needs to include not only lower income and supportive housing, but also moderate and middle income housing, housing for teachers, police officers, firefighters, bus drivers, administrative assistants, restaurant managers, and the whole range of individuals and families that make a neighborhood thrive. There seems to be a trend in the city to be interested in building luxury housing and low-income housing, which only works to maintain the tale of two cities that our former mayor once campaigned against. Ignoring an agreement that offers the necessary balance of housing in our neighborhood, which was hammered out in 2009, is short-sighted to address a problem exacerbated by a current pandemic. I'd also point out that this problem stems from an approval of an RFP that put us all in this situation today. This proposal should not have been selected if our government entities all worked together two years ago. Community Board Four has long worked collaboratively to find solutions to not only our neighborhood concerns, but citywide and societal concerns. We would have been very happy to find solutions to address our housing crisis of today, while still respecting the agreement in 2009 to build moderate and middle income housing. We only had to be asked to be involved. And once we did get involved, we offered yet another compromise by creating a donut hole in these income bands, something we usually oppose, to help achieve higher income bands bringing us closer to the 2009 agreement. The residents of Hell's Kitchen have put their trust in city government and their elected officials, working in good faith and seeking compromise to balance the greater good of the city and the effect on our local neighborhood. By passing this 2009 agreement erodes that trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Devlin. And let me just note for the commission, if you have questions for members of the public, like Mr. Devlin or others coming, just please raise your hand at some point in the process and I will be happy to call on you when they're concluded. But if I do not see hands, I'm just going to proceed to the next member of the public who is here joining us. So, okay, Mr. Devlin, thank you very much. Let me go on to Jean Daniel Nolan, JD, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. My name is Jean Daniel Nolan. I am the co-chair of the Hell's Kitchen Land Use Committee of Manhattan Community Board Four. I live on 48th Street on near 10th Avenue, Hops, giving a jump from the DEP site. I have been involved as a former Block Association President and former Chair of Board Four in the effort to develop this site as affordable housing and as a park for over 20 years. I recall the deliberations that led to the agreement that Mr. Devlin talked about. The points of agreement, the discussions were open and transparent, robust. A deal was struck. After more than a decade, we may be close to realizing the deal and with your help honoring the agreement. Since the agreement Board Four has found, fought for and supported the creation of over 3,000 affordable housing units in the district that's completed or under construction or under public review, with 60% of those units under 60% AMI. This is not a debate about creating affordable housing. This is about how do we fulfill the Board's mandate, CB4's mandate, under the charter to preserve the economic diversity of the district. This is about how do we achieve the Department of City Planning's aspiration to foster diverse neighborhoods with mixed income housing. This is about honoring a contract between the city and its citizens, the entire agreement, not cherry picked points. To help foster City Planning's aspiration and to balance lots of low-income housing, which we have fought for and will continue to fight for with some much-needed moderate income housing for, as Mr. Devlin pointed out, teachers, cops, nurses, the whole range of workers, to make this city diverse. We urge you to deny this application unless modifications are made as detailed in our letter of May 2022. Specifically, make the income mix more consistent with the terms of the agreement. The citizens of Hell's Kitchen have worked in very good faith with the Board to find a compromise. We want this project to succeed. We want to restore the trust between the city and its citizens. We urge you to support Borough President Levine's urging the applicants to continue the close coordination with the surrounding community and the Board to arrive at an acceptable AMI mix. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Good to see you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate your, your being here. Let me move on to Joe Ristucha, also Community Board Four. Joe, welcome.
Here's a question from Commissioner Goodrich.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, sorry. Should I, should I wait until after?
No, no, no. If you have a question for Mr. Nolan, you should pose it now. That's fine. I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So my question is, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak on this. I was actually very interested when you all came to testify initially. And, and then I had some questions afterwards about, you know, the, as you were saying, the economic diversity. Now, first I just want to point out that I understand there's, for me, there's two distinct issues. One is, you know, the trust factor and being told one thing and then it's another. But what I would like for you to respond to are two things. One is, you know, there's a point that the AMI is, is higher in most areas than it should be anyway because it's including all of these other areas outside of New York City. So that's one point I wanted for you to respond to because that's the first thing that people say when they hear about, well, I think, tend to advocate say when they hear about this project. And then the second one, and this was my particular issue, is we, we had another presentation here. And from what my understanding was, because I think it was like, there is economic diversity in, in terms of in this area from housing that's been built. I think someone, maybe his name is Jeffrey LaFrance Swa testified that there's no, that there's, you know, hasn't been, that there's been a ton of low-income housing built here and there's no middle income housing. And then afterwards, the data didn't reflect that. So I would like for you to respond to this because I think it'll be helpful.
Those are excellent points, Commissioner. Thank you for that. I'm going to defer to our housing, affordable housing expert and co-chair of our housing committee to address those very questions that arise continually about the AMIs. Who can afford it? Are they on balance with this neighborhood, with the city, with the state, whatever? Those are excellent questions. So with your permission, I will defer to the next speaker on those important questions.
Okay, Commissioner, we'll, we'll ask the next speaker, which is Joe Ristucha, to either incorporate the answers into his remarks. Mr. Ristucha, I see you're hearing me here. So either do that or Commissioner Goodrich can pose it to you when you're done. Either way, but welcome. Good to see you.
Hi. Good evening. Good afternoon, Chair Grodnik. My name is Joe Ristucha. I'm the co-chair of the Housing, Health and Human Services Committee of Manhattan Community Board Four. And I want to first note, I commend the development team. This is the exact opposite of the Delirio. This development team has worked with the community. The building looks good. We have been able to incorporate many issues and solve many issues as part of our community, whether it's the DEP portion.
We have been able to incorporate many issues and solve many issues as part of our community, whether it's the DEP portion or working with the cultural portion. Our main two issues are the distribution of 40 apartments that are currently at 40% of AMI to bands between 80 and 130% of AMI, and the question of the easement and the preservation of the DEP site long term, so it cannot be built on. I want to put in perspective that in our community, a one bedroom starts at $3,800. A two bedroom starts at $5,800 a month. In the proposed income bands, the highest rent would be $3,600 for a family apartment at 130 AMI. So you can understand, it immediately means that anyone, no one can compete in the district if they are a two income household, two civil servants with the market. Then units are just not there and they are not being built. I also want to note, this is a matter of political will and choice and economics. In the points of agreement, there's a $40 million set aside to be able to build these two projects. It is a specific point. None of those funds have been accessed. We fully well know that the tax credit money is important as part of the financial equation. You take it out and you use part of that $40 million fund. That's why it was put in, because it was recognized that these two projects would have extreme needs for capital over and above the normal city programs. We really ask you to work with us to deal with this issue, to have a broader range of incomes, because overall in the district, over 60 to 65% of the units that have been built in the past five years have been below 60% of AMI. A small tranche around 80% of AMI, and then an extremely small number between 80 and 165. That is a problem we have, that there is no desire, political will, to build those units here, especially when we sat in 2009, I participated in this negotiation, to have this broad range of incomes. I think that's the broad issue here. It's political will and choice. It is not about the financing cannot work. The developer has said to us, the financing, they submitted an original package with the financing working at those AMI bands. That was a direct discussion front to front to front. So for Commissioner Goodrich, I think if you can answer those questions, I can respond to.
So before we go to Commissioner Goodrich, Mr. Restuccia, just on the easement. Say something about the easement before you close here.
Yes, one of the things about the easement is there is no permanent provision that DEP could not build on a portion of this site going forward. We are specifically requesting that the easement limit any square footage DEP could build in the future, and that it be a public space open easement, open space easement for the rest of the project, meaning the DEP portion of the site. That's what's also in front of you, because the last thing we need is a 30 foot separation easement. And then 10 years now or five years from now, someone at DEP says, we can build a nice service building on this location that had been promised to be a park long term. We need to have easement further refined, so it precludes that sort of action by another mayor, another. So we don't have to have a fight again. That's all.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Goodrich, let's go to you to pose your questions to Mr. Restuccia.
Sorry, I was muted. I thought some of it was addressed. I was saying before, I understand it, you know, and I completely understand the trust issue part. But, you know, obviously as a commission and me myself as a tenant advocate for something like the Lirio, it's hard. Developers come all of the time and they complain that it's hard to provide more affordable housing units. So when we get more that are, especially where the AMI includes lower income, it's hard to reject that kind of proposal. So I think I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about, you know, there are many, this project has often, and the other Lirio has often been in the press, and it's been framed as sort of like, you know, a NIMBY, and the opposite of what you're saying. And one of the things that is pointed out is that the AMI is already higher than it should be for most areas. And so I wanted to give, you know, you all an opportunity to respond to that. That was the first part. And then the second part is, I, you know, I don't remember who it was. I don't remember if it was Mr. LaFrance Swa, but the point is, it was testified to earlier. It's like there are so many low income housing developments in this particular area. And it's sort of like inundated and they're not any or enough for, that was the narrative. And then later it was pointed out with data that that actually isn't the case. So I want, I want for you to respond to those two things, you know, while you're here. So, yeah.
So first I want to note, we're not inundated with low income housing at all. We are inundated in social service uses and supportive housing. Now, our board is one of the, is the third highest board with supportive housing in the entire city. For the simple reason, we have welcomed it and we have brought in developers and social service sponsors all over the place. So we do that on a regular basis. It is the most convenient thing to throw NIMBY at a community that is welcoming when you are trying to get something developed that is inconsistent with prior commitments. It creates a smokescreen, and that's what we've been living through on these two projects for the last couple of years. We're here today because we know that the data, the flat data, is that the majority of affordable units built in our district are below 60% of AMI for two reasons. One is, majority are inclusionary, that is paired with taxes and bonds in large towers. That's great, because we're producing all this affordable housing for that income group. But then it jumps up to, that's the majority, and now up we go to market rate. So it's that middle group, and specifically city workers, two income households, that the range here for 120% of AMI for a single person is 61,000. Well, a city worker or someone who is married may make more than that very easily, or a larger household, and they're going to be above those limits. We want to capture those people so they stay in the city. And we also want to capture all the folks who have grown up in affordable housing in our district, who have benefited by that, more education, better jobs. They need the opportunity. They cannot afford the $3,800 one bedroom or the $5,800 two bedroom. That's who we're trying to serve, so we have a balanced community. And the data is there. We can provide it to the commission. We're one of the few boards who tracks all the affordable housing in our district, and we do regular updates on the Hudson Yards points agreement, Western Rail Yards, and then West Chelsea points of agreement that shows, here's what was promised, here's what was built, plus the broader affordable housing which are what we've done. So I think that helps sort of lay out why we are so focused on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Restuccia, we may have it already, but if we, if there is something that you have created that we may not already have, please feel free to share it with me or with City Planning staff, and we'll make sure that the commission has it. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Let me see if there are other questions. Okay, no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Restuccia. We're going to move on to the next member of the public, which is Becca Gottlieb, also from Manhattan Community Board Four, to be followed by Frank Loosner. So Ms. Gottlieb, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. My name is Becca, and I've lived in Community Board Four for about seven years. And I have affordable housing and I'm in a low income group, low income group. And I am so grateful to have had affordable housing before this. I lived in the Dorothy Ross Friedman residence. And I am a performer, and I am so grateful to be living in this district where I can see shows, I can take classes, and I know that I would never be able to afford to live in this neighborhood without affordable housing. And I have so many friends that would benefit and are also in the low income category as well. Actually, I just referred another friend to the Actors Fund to help them with their application. And I just know that I want to share how much it has helped me by living in affordable housing, to be able to live in the city, especially after the pandemic. I would never be able to afford to live in the area. And I want to say how much the Actors Fund has helped me. I was lucky enough for over the past 10 years to be applying, and it took probably 10 years to get into an application, to get into a building. And the Actors Fund really helped me with quite a few applications, especially I'm a freelancer. I have multiple jobs, and the application process can be a little bit complicated and challenging for freelancers. So the Actors Fund has helped me and many of my friends as well. And I also wanted to say I'm very excited about the community space in 705 10th Avenue being used for an independent theater company, because I know a lot of theaters have had trouble after the pandemic and the entire business in general, and especially small theaters. I think that it's great to really support smaller theater companies and to really support artists in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that I am truly grateful for this opportunity and really, and I'm so excited about 705 10th Avenue. And I really have benefited from affordable housing, and I want to share this with the rest of my artist community and to promote art and culture in the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Gottlieb. We appreciate your enthusiasm and also for your being with us today. We really appreciate it. Let me see if there are questions for you. I do not see any. Thank you again for being here. Let me move on to Frank Loosner, to be followed by Paul Leibowitz. Mr. Loosner, welcome.
Hi, good morning. My name is Frank Loosner, and I'm the operations manager at Rosie's Theater Kids, and I am representing Lori Klinger, who is our executive and artistic director. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this important project. We know firsthand how important affordable housing and arts and culture space is to our community. Rosie's Theaters Kids is an arts education organization dedicated to enriching the lives of children through the arts. Our art center located at 445 West 45th Street is just a few blocks from the DEP, and we also do programming in the local schools. RT Kids was launched in 2003 at PS 51, a Title I public school bordering on the theater district, where students would walk by Broadway theaters daily and never have the opportunity to go inside. The need for low and moderate income housing in our community is so important. 86% of the kids we serve are from low income households. These families should be able to live in the district and have access to all the wonderful cultural offerings on Broadway and beyond. We also, we're also observing the loss of critical arts space in the district. We're thrilled to learn that the project will have Indy Space as the community facility tenant. Their proposed sub-tenant Waterwell does incredible work in the schools with us, and we're happy to see them growing deeper roots in the neighborhood. For these reasons, Rosie's Theater Kids is happy to support this project and the many benefits it will bring to our community. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us today. We really appreciate your testimony. Let me move on to Paul Leibowitz, to be followed by Rebecca Damon.
Mr. Leibowitz, you can unmute your microphone.
Hello.
Hi there. We can hear you.
My name is Paul Leibowitz. I am one of the founders and current co-chair of Indy Space. We will be partnering with the Entertainment Community Fund and Douglasston to activate and lease the community facility space. The project brings together critical affordable housing, much needed open space, and affordable ground floor art space to enhance the neighborhood and lives of the residents. For those of you who don't know about us, part of Indy Space's mission is to create affordable performance or rehearsal spaces for the independent theater community. We're very excited to be working with the Artist Co-op and Waterwell to program the space. This district has such a rich cultural community, but we also know that so many arts workers and cultural spaces have been displaced. We look forward to operating a long-term affordable workspace for artists and to build upon the existing cultural network in the neighborhood. We're excited to find opportunities to serve the residents in the building and the community, and we'll also look to explore ways to engage with the adjacent open space. We look forward to working with everyone to realize this important project, and thank you very much for.
Great. Thank you very much for being here. Let's see, next up is, let's see, do we have, is Rebecca Damon next? I'm sorry, I'm asking my back office here. Who's next?
I think I am.
Okay, okay, Ms. Damon, look, we're going to let you call yourself out there. Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, I like, my, my, my screen is just a half second behind, but we're delighted to see you. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate being here today. My name is Rebecca Damon, and I am the New York local executive director of SAG-AFTRA. SAG-AFTRA is the Screen Actors Guild American Federation of Television and Radio Artists. I'm here today to express our strong support of the project at 705 10th Avenue. SAG-AFTRA is a union that represents actors, announcers, broadcast journalists, dancers, DJs, news writers, news editors, program hosts, puppeteers, recording artists, singers, stunt performers, voiceover artists, and other media professionals. SAG-AFTRA members work in front of a camera and behind a microphone. This project will create over 150 units of affordable housing and provide reasonably priced space for our members to rehearse and create work. We are thrilled at what this will mean for the performing arts community. According to the New York City Comptroller's 2019 report on the creative economy, the creative sector accounts for 13% of the city's total economic output. 32% of that creative sector is in employment in film, television, and the performing arts. That means that SAG-AFTRA members are a significant part of the engine of economic activity in New York City. However, that report, that same report also states, finding affordable places to live and work for the creative sector workers has become an ever steeper challenge, leading to profound migration across the five boroughs in recent years. This is a critical issue. Our members need housing in Clinton and Hell's Kitchen. These are neighborhoods where they both work and live. The project at 705 10th Avenue will produce low and moderate income units in a community that saw over 3,000 residents in creative occupations leave between 2018 and 2017. That's not just a loss for our members, but for our city. The performing arts are integral to the New York City's identity. Creating an environment that can sustain the people who devote their lives to creating that art is a priority for me. SAG-AFTRA is pleased to support this affordable housing project. It will deliver long-term community benefits for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony and for joining us today. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to Diane Quinn, to be followed by Joe Petracelli. And that's it for the day, and I'm sorry, that's it for the day on 705 10th Avenue till we move on to the next item. So I will just note that if you are interested in testifying on this item, we're getting close to the end here, so please sign up, and we will call on you after Mr. Petracelli. Ms. Quinn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Diane Quinn. I'm an Actors Equity actor and also the Outreach Associate at the Entertainment Community Fund. And I'm reading a letter on behalf of Kate Schindel, President of Actors Equity Association, who couldn't be here today. One second, please.
Okay.
Dear City Commissioners, Planning Commissioners, as President of Actors Equity Association, the labor union representing more than 51,000 professional actors and stage managers, I would like to offer our enthusiastic endorsement for this important affordable housing project at 705 10th Avenue. Equity works closely with the Entertainment Community Fund to support our members, many of whom are low income and moderate income and live and or work in the neighborhood. The site is located steps from Broadway in a district that is rich with arts and culture, but it is also experiencing large increases in rent. It is, it is critical to increase the supply of affordable housing in this community, especially for lower income arts workers and other New Yorkers who are being priced out of neighborhoods and boroughs all across the city. This was happening prior to 2020, but the COVID, but, but COVID has shut, but the COVID shutdown had a devastating and disproportionate effect on all of us who work in the live performing arts. In addition to the housing component, this project incorporates affordable space for the theater community to rehearse and create programming. This type of facility is vital to New York City's recovery and will ensure that actors, stage managers, and our colleagues in the performing arts, a huge economic driver, of course, for New York City, have places to incubate new work. Again, this project will offer 100% affordable housing and a community facility centered around the arts. Equity is happy to support Rialto West. Sincerely, Kate Schindel, President, Actors Equity Association. Equity is happy to support Rialto West. Sincerely, Kate Schindel, President, Actors Equity Association. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for being here and sharing, sharing that. We appreciate it. Let me move on to Joe Petracelli. Mr. Petracelli?
Yes, hello. My name is Melanie Mashburn. I'm an employee with the Jazz Foundation of America and I'll be reading a statement from Joe today because he could not join us.
Okay.
Thank you. Dear City Planning Commissioners, my name is Joe Petracelli and I'm the Executive Director of Jazz Foundation of America. We are a nonprofit that provides emergency assistance to musicians and their families in times of crisis. Our services include housing assistance, pro bono healthcare, disaster relief, employment, and direct financial support. We work with two thousand musicians nationally every year, but New York is our headquarters and CB four is our home. We had offices for twenty years on Forty Eighth Street, just down the street from the Rialto West, seven oh five tenth Avenue site, and we're now located on thirty-seventh and eighth. Historically, we have served many musicians who live and work in Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen and who have contributed to the rich cultural fabric of the community. We frequently collaborate with the Entertainment Community Fund to help our clients and we are thrilled to support this project to bring affordable housing for low and moderate income households into these neighborhoods. The folks we serve lead precarious lives and often live on the verge of homelessness. They've worked all their lives but don't have the same benefits, savings, and safety net as your typical full-time worker. So many of them are still recovering and rebuilding their lives from the economic havoc brought by the pandemic. Meanwhile, their music has continued to bring us comfort and solace during these dark times. They deserve access to safe and stable housing in this community. There is also a growing, growing need for affordable cultural space. Places to rehearse and perform have either closed or have been pushed out of the neighborhood. We hope to partner on programming at the ground-floor community facility and present free concerts to neighborhood audiences. This development brings together affordable housing for those who need it the most, a space for the arts to thrive and to park. I can't think of a better use of this site. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Let me just do a final call here for members of the public wishing to testify on seven oh five tenth Avenue, which is calendars twenty-three to twenty-six. I see none. So we're gonna close the hearing on this item and we're gonna move on to the next. I'm gonna ask you, Madam Secretary, to please call the fifth public hearing item for the day.
Chair Grodnik, Commissioners, I'll call the next item for, for our public hearing. Brooklyn, calendar numbers twenty-seven through twenty-nine. CD six, calendar number twenty-seven, C two one zero three four eight Z M K. Calendar number twenty-eight, N two one zero three four nine Z R K. Calendar number twenty-nine, C two one zero three five zero Z S K. A public hearing in a matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit concerning, concerning the Ninth Street rezoning.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Let me note, we are gonna start with our applicant team here, which includes Paul Probst, Richard Gatto, and Anthony Daniels, to be followed by at least a couple of members of the public who have already signed up and we'll see if there are others. So I will turn to the applicant team now whenever you all are ready. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. My name is Paul Prue from Carter-Ledger to Milburn. I'm here today to present to you the Ninth Street rezoning. I'm joined by Richard Gatto and Tony Daniels from the architectural firm Cycle Architecture and Planning. We're here to talk about three different land use actions, which I'll introduce to you in a moment. If you could turn to the next slide, please. But first, I'd like to orient you to the context of the neighborhood that we're talking about. This is a proposal in Gowanus, which I believe many of you are very familiar with. Just above our site is the city's eighty-two block rezoning area that was approved in November of last year. Our site is just to the south. Next slide, please. And we are on Ninth Street between Second and Third Avenue. And we are bordered, or Eighth Street is behind us. And the project area extends from a hundred feet off of Second, Third Avenue to what is essentially the IBZ boundary to the west, which we'll get into in a moment. The development site is outlined on this slide in red. And I'm here with Richie Gatto, the owner of the site and the applicant, who will introduce himself and talk about what we're here for. Next slide, please. Go ahead, Richie. And be sure to unmute yourself. So maybe we'll come back to Richie to discuss his motivation for filing the application and his background and move on to the next slide and discuss the context of this proposal a little more. So again, the site is located on Ninth Street and here you see in the area map that within the rezoning area that we'll talk about, the uses are all non-conforming residential, with one exception in red there, right underneath the label for the new M one four R seven A zoning district, there's a five thousand square foot warehouse. Our site has been undeveloped since the nineteen seventies when existing tenement housing was torn down and it's been operated by Mr. Gatto and his family as a parking garage or parking lot, sorry. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is a mix of many different uses. Here on the top left, you see the one five thousand square foot warehouse and then the rest of the residential strip on Ninth Street. To the right, the photo to the right is looking south or looking west. Again, with the development site in the foreground and the residential buildings that are in the rezoning area. The third picture on the bottom right is looking back up towards the development site, showing the warehouse that's located at the corner of Second Avenue and Ninth Street, which has, which has been there forever and has recently been renovated, is located in the IBZ. Next slide, please. Third Avenue, though, also with many residential uses above stores, is just to the east here. This shows you what that looks like. It's predominated by the train trestle, which is the subway train that goes along Tenth Street just to our south. And you can see it has a slightly different flavor. It's a wider street and there's quite a bit of commercial activity there. Next slide, please. So again, the site here on the left and to give you some idea of the surrounding uses, the photos on the right show you Eighth Street, which is the street to our rear, where the middle house there is owned also by the applicant, but it's not part of the proposed rezoning actions or other actions. Next slide, please. So the other big component of the surrounding area is the IBZ. And the top two slides show you what that looks like. There's the, the train trestle again, ever-present, setting a height context in many ways. And then on the right, there is the, some, you know, just really well-preserved, active, widely appreciated nineteenth-century warehouses that go beyond Second Avenue. And then at the bottom, you'll see, as we look up into Park Slope, what we're looking at there is the residential district that was zoned residential in nineteen seventy-three and has, also creates a context as you move towards Prospect Park. Next slide, please. So with that view of the context, again, the IBZ is an important part of the surrounding area. This is a map showing our development site and the project area on the eastern edge of the development site at the north term in red. Third Avenue creates a long boundary for the IBZ to its east, but we are not within the IBZ. We are just outside of it. Next slide, please. So in connection with the eighty-two block rezoning, you may recall that there was quite a bit of planning that went into, went into your decision to approve that rezoning. One component of the planning dealt with the IBZ. There was quite a bit of outreach that happened in twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty-one, a Gowanus Industrial Business Zone vision plan was passed or was published by the department. And it really created a framework for the treatment of the industrial business zone properties near the eighty-two block rezoning area. And we were mentioned there as well, which I'll get to in a moment. But this is a great example of, you know, some of the important planning work that has gone on in the areas surrounding our site and that is important to consider here with our proposal. Next slide, please. One of the recommendations of the framework was that in the Third Avenue mid-block, which was likely to remain residential, the recommendation was to bring those uses into conformance and in some cases to allow modest increases in density to reinforce mixed-use corridors. These areas here that you're seeing with the outline of the IBZ in purple are residential primarily today, like our lot. And, you know, create the, the sort of the transition from the area to the east of Third Avenue that is predominantly residential and the IBZ, which you see in the purple. Next slide, please. So let's go with these land use actions. We're here for a rezoning, as you know, to change the existing M two one zoning district, which is mapped in nineteen sixty-one, to an M one four R seven A zoning district on a predominantly residential strip of Ninth Street. We're also seeking to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area and establish a mixed-use district, MX twenty-five. We're also seeking a special permit to waive the twenty parking spaces that are triggered by the proposed development of a building. Next slide, please. So the reasons for the proposed rezoning, some of the land use rationale here include the IBZ report that I had mentioned just a moment ago, that, you know, that recommends as a city policy essentially to upzone and to make conforming the residential uses that exist in the manufacturing district that adjoins the IBZ. And that includes our site on Ninth Street. And in November of twenty twenty-one, the commission also adopted a proposal from a developer to rezone a portion of the Third Avenue on either side of Twelfth Street, C four four A, which is the residential equivalent for which is R seven A. So there's quite a bit of, there's two good precedents in the IBZ report and in your action from November of twenty twenty-one for our suggested R seven A rezoning. Next slide, please. Furthermore, in the eighty-two block rezoning, the city approved R seven A on Union Street, which is again very similar to Ninth Street in that it's a cross-canal corridor, bridging the east and west sides of Brownstone, Brooklyn and is the same width and, or almost the same width and shares many of the same characteristics as the proposed rezon area. Next slide, please. So Ninth Street itself is a transit corridor. It's a truck route. It's a bike lane. There's a east-west bike lane that is located down Ninth Street. The B thirty-seven and the B one oh three traverse it with stops on Eighth Street and Third. The B sixty-one with stops at Ninth, Second, and Third, and the B one oh three. And predominantly, or most predominantly here, the RFNG are located at Fourth Avenue and Ninth, and then the FNG at Smith's. So we're right in between those proximity.
It sounds like, it sounds like your, your time is up. Let me, let me ask if you had much, much to go here. I, I would like to give Mr. Gatto a chance to say hello and to set out his vision if he is available, but I just tell, tell me if you had much more.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was just about to turn it over to Tony Daniels, who's going to introduce the proposed building. And I think he's ready to do that. And then I was going to wrap it up with just a little bit of explanation about the special permit and MIH.
Okay, so we're a little ahead of time, beyond the time, but we want to talk about that stuff. So why don't we go next to Mr. Daniels? Why don't you tell us, I'll pose this as a question. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the building? Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Grodnik, and thanks to all the Commissioners. I'm Tony Daniels. I am the Principal of Cycle Architecture, a firm known for our focus on issues of urban sustainability and resilience. And we prepared some preliminary designs for this building, which is a ninety-five-foot tall building with forty-eight residential units, thirteen of which would be affordable option one under MIH, and also a commercial ground floor and cellar. During meetings with the community board, Borough President's Office, we heard several concerns related to the proposed buildings, environmental performance, and resilience, and I'd like to address some of those today. First thing, I'd like to note that any project built today has to be close to net-zero energy as possible, or it will need to be retrofitted. That's a simple reality. This building is no different, and you will note that we are not proposing a lot of glass in the, in the facades. Punched windows provide plenty of light and views while providing better energy performance. In fact, we can meet passive house standards for this building. Currently, my firm has a passive house building in construction in Crown Heights that was awarded a Buildings of Excellence Grant from NYSERDA. So this is something that we are very familiar with doing. Now, for nine years, our office was on Third Avenue, on Third Street and Third Avenue, and we know this neighborhood well. We're familiar with how the storm stores back up as they run downhill from Prospect Park. Each street has one and capacity is a known issue with all of these storm stores. And we, we heard these concerns from our neighborhood residents and our client who lives on Eighth Street, that during heavy rainstorms, the buildings on the Eighth Street sewer line experienced backups, and we recognize this concern. Our building is proposed to cover the entire lot, but substantial green-planted areas are planned at the upper and lower roofs. These can be used to implement best practices in stormwater management, including detaining runoff and installing rain gardens or blue roofs. We also intend to coordinate with stormwater management initiatives undertaken at the streets, such as rain gardens or bioswales. Flood risk at present is small on the site. It's in Zone X, just outside the flood zone per the twenty fifteen firm. However, in the future, this will become an issue. A dry floodproof cellar can be implemented to militate against the risk of flood damage, and this would be coordinated somewhat with the design of the streetscape. So with that, I will turn back. Thank you for the, to address you.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me see what, what other questions we, we have here. What questions we have here, real questions, not efforts to give you guys a couple of minutes more to finish up. Let me go to the commission. Okay, did, was, is Mr. Gatto available to, to?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're there?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. I, I know that you wanted to say a little bit about your, your vision thoughts.
Well, let me just introduce myself to the rest of the commission. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Richard Gatto here. I represent my mom's Angelina Gatto Trust. I'm the trustee and responsible for this project. And as you see from the beginning, Paul and Tony did considerable work and were, were interested in developing a building to suit all the different issues of this part of Gowanus. I, I've lived and worked in Gowanus. I, I know what the manufacturing zone is all about. I, I've worked in the meat business. I worked in supermarkets. I worked in manufacturing in the Gowanus area growing up. My parents grew up and they were born in the neighborhood. My mom and dad were both born on Eighth Street. I grew up on Eighth Street in the adjacent property as to this project. And we covered a lot of issues over the years. It takes a long time to cover the issues and we spoke to many people and tried to incorporate everything in this, in this project. And I think it's a very viable project and it would benefit the community to not only today, but tomorrow and, and the future of the city. Again, I'll refer my, the rest of my time back to Paul. And he'll explain the rest of the project as for the nuances and the particular situation that this project poses. Being in that it's a, it's a, it's an industrial area with a residential area together. And it has to be all incorporated. That's why we're seeking a mixed use and residential. There was a snap move back then, but I'll let Paul explain that to you, Paul.
I defer to the chair here, of course.
Yeah, go ahead. You can, let's, let's, we'll do it quickly and then, because I think we got to go to members of the public or any other questions from the commission. But yes, go ahead.
I would, I would just add to what you've heard so far that if you, production can turn to slide 19. The special permit that we're seeking here would facilitate a commercial ground floor of 8,000 square feet. And that ground floor is big in the community's eyes because it allows a transition between the IBZ, which is nearby, and, you know, this existing residential neighborhood. And, you know, sets the precedent for, you know, future commercial uses and an extension of, of the IBZ in that, in that context. If you'll turn to the next slide, please, the special permit is necessary because as you can see here, the, if we were to provide the parking that is required, even using a mechanical system, which is virtually limitless, once you've installed an elevator, we're limited to 3,600 square feet of ground floor. So it chops our commercial footprint in half. This doesn't even show a residential lobby, but gives you an idea of why we're asking for the special permit. Commissioner Lozorg had asked whether there should be some sort of financial consideration relative to that request. And I think based on her question, she agrees that waiving parking is often a good thing. And I think it is especially here because of the transit corridor that exists. But also so that we can satisfy this commercial need that the community is very much in support of. This is not a great place for a curb cut with bikes and buses is already a very congested area of the neighborhood. And we think that limiting the parking here is, you know, prudent. So we are going to save a little bit of money on that. We're also, you know, proposing MIH. And as I'm sure you remember, the market and financial study that justified MIH that was published in 2012 by HDC, you know, made some conclusions about when it was appropriate to map MIH or to, you know, require affordable housing. And it's not in every situation here because 421A was around when we started our program, we chose option one and we've stuck to that so far. We have heard that deep affordability might be desirable from the Borough President and the Community Board. And we're certainly open to that. But, you know, just normal MIH, the study concluded without 421A is really only appropriate in high-rise scenarios, even in the very strong markets of the city. So, you know, we're, we're not asking for, we're not asking for any sort of favors about MIH, you know, obviously. But I think that, you know, in terms of financial, the finances here, waiving the parking definitely does meet the finding that it facilitates affordable housing because it's, it's just hard without 421A to build affordable. So I would, I would end on that note and welcome any further questions.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the extra info and also I think it's always worth reminding that there's a, there's a market study associated with, was, was associated with the creation of MIH. Okay. I don't see questions from the commission. So it looks like perhaps we, we, we got you and the team to share all the details necessary so we can spare you further questions here. And we're going to go to members of the public. We thank you for your, for your testimony. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to go on to William Thomas to be followed by Dylan Wells. And I will note that those are the only two people here signed up to testify on the Ninth Street rezoning. If there are others, now is the moment. So Mr. Thomas, when you're ready, we'd like to hear from you.
Great. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
We can, we can. Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Will Thomas. I serve as the Executive Director of Open New York. We support this project on Ninth Street because we feel that allowing more homes in Gowanus will both help to alleviate New York's housing shortage, but also to fight displacement across Brooklyn. I believe that everyone knows on some level that New York has an incredible housing shortage, but let me add some context to the conversation. New Yorkers are facing rent increases up to 50, 60, 70% as rent discounts offered during the pandemic expire. Homelessness is at the highest rate since the Great Depression. There are over 14,000 children that sleep in city shelters every night. So the 12 affordable homes, they're not going to solve the problem. But, you know, they're desperately needed and we need to, you know, allow them where we can. But we also think that allowing more market rate housing in Gowanus, which is objectively, you know, wealthy part of the city, will help by proactively preventing displacement in other neighborhoods. So the census tract for this rezoning area has a median household income of 99,000, which is well above the city average. You know, Gowanus is a desirable neighborhood. It would be many families' first choice. But if they can't find a place to live here, they're going to move to a more affordable neighborhood. And as displaced demand increases in those less wealthy neighborhoods, the rent's going to increase. It's going to force current tenants there to allocate ever larger shares of their income to stay in their homes. And, you know, eventually knock those who can't pay to the street. So we feel that if neighborhoods like Gowanus don't build their fair share of housing, that's going to lead to, you know, long-term residents of neighborhoods further in Brooklyn, whether it's Crown Heights, Flatbush, Brownsville. Though many of these longtime residents will continue to be displaced. So we feel approving this application, even though it's not huge, it's the first step in sparing families in less wealthy neighborhoods, the pressure of displacement. In addition, I just want to flag, I know that some have opposed the rezoning because they feel that it could set a precedent for a residential rezoning of the IBZ, the industrial business zone and threaten jobs. We think it's important to note that this doesn't include any of the IBZ. It's merely, you know, it's a block already mostly residential, merely it butts the IBZ. We think that mixed income housing is very appropriate and should be supported. But I'd also like to push back against the Borough President's recommendation to downsize the parcels that are not in this particular project, but are in the rezoning area. I think his recommendation is well-intended. He wants to protect the IBZ. But again, none of those properties are in the IBZ area. And if we were to follow the BP's recommendations, that would mean that MIH would not be triggered if those properties are redeveloped. And we want that affordable housing and we want that mixed income housing on those as well. Not just this particular project. So I hope the CPC will approve this project, which is from our perspective, clearly a great decision for Brooklyn and Gowanus as a whole. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Perfect timing. Thanks, Mr. Thomas. We appreciate your, your being here and sharing those insights. And a reminder of the crisis scenario that we find ourselves in at a variety of levels here. So thank you very much for that. Let us, we have a question for you from Commissioner Goodrich.
Hi, hi, Will. This is a very small project. So my question is more of just the broader arguments that you made. I think the first thing I'm, I'm wondering is, you know, I think your argument is based on the premise that housing development, providing more housing development, even if it's market rate, will keep people in the more expensive areas so that they won't trickle over to more moderate income housing. And I would like for you to respond to really the contention that that's just hyper segregation in an already very segregated city.
Well, I think of it as more harm reduction, but I also think that mixed income housing by its very nature is fighting segregation. These aren't, you know, it's not a wholly market rate condo building. It is a mixed income project. And I think building more of those would help to, you know, integrate neighborhoods, fight segregation. But I also think on top of that, you know, many of these neighborhoods, many neighborhoods that, you know, of these wealthy kind of areas particularly use exclusionary zoning to keep neighborhoods segregated. So I think that ideally, we would move into more of an abundant housing framework where you know, people can move to neighborhoods. Other people can find rentals that are affordable in neighborhoods. It's a lot of need to change for that, but that is our perspective at least.
I mean, we, we have very, but I wanted to hear your point of view on that.
No, no, I, I'm happy to connect offline at any time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Great. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We're going to go on to Dylan Wells. Whenever you are ready, the floor is yours.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chair. Um, so I am, you know, full disclosure here at William's invitation, we're both part of Open New York, which is an organization that pushes for housing abundance in New York City. So he's a lot smarter than I am. And he made his policy points a lot more effective than I probably, effectively than I probably could have. But what I do have is that I live in the area. I do not live in Gowanus. I live in Prospect Heights. But I'm down there all the time. I bike through it. I bike past this site. I know it pretty well. And I got to say, when William told me that there was some contention around building 48 units of housing there, my response was, you know, you got to be kidding me. This is, this seems like a no-brainer. Um, you know, on a personal level, I've had so many friends that have left the city over the course of last year, including people like me who stayed here through the pandemic. And I know a lot of young upwardly mobile professionals didn't, they moved home and they moved back. But there are a core of us who stayed and who really want to be part of these neighborhoods and want to find affordable housing, especially in neighborhoods like Gowanus. The particular example that I think of, there are a couple that live two floors above me in my current building who were looking to stay in Brooklyn long-term and who can't. They were specifically looking at Gowanus and they're the type of people who could fill units like this one. Um, but they've been priced out. I mean, we've all seen the charts. We've all seen property values. We've all seen rents. We've all seen the way that they've increased as people begin to move back to New York. And as all those COVID deals that were issued during the pandemic begin to expire. I mean, the, you know, median rent in the city has gotten extraordinary. So I agree with William in terms of that building new units, even ones that are at market rate will increase housing abundance and help people like me find housing. That doesn't mean that below market rate housing isn't also necessary. But if anything, a neighborhood like Gowanus, near public transit with lots of underutilized lots, with lots of low-density housing should be just like an absolute target for building this kind of housing and making sure that the people in my building can stay in the neighborhood, even as we get priced out of our current building, which is what's happening to a lot of my neighbors, including the couple I mentioned earlier, who are moving to Philadelphia instead. Um, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of a personal light on, you know, the kinds of people there are, you know, flowing out of this neighborhood recently, you know, he works in marketing the same as I do. She works in restaurants. She lost her job during the pandemic. They're really hoping they could make it work in Gowanus. But, you know, the affordability just isn't there for people like them. And, you know, to Goodridge's point, um, he's black, she's white. They're a great example of the kind of young professionals that can help disrupt the kind of segregation that we've seen in our housing system up until now. And there's just no place for us anymore in this city and so many neighborhoods. So, um, I know I got five seconds left, so that's my bit. Just wanted to get up here and say that.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Wells. Let me see if there are any questions for you. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your spending some time with us this morning or this afternoon now. Let me just do a final call for members of the public who they want to testify on the Ninth Street rezoning. I do not see any. So Madam Secretary, I'm going to turn to you and see if we have other business before the commission today.
No, Chair Grodnik. There is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by slugging this hearing on the Upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal through GCP's website or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Prop. 31st Floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let me just, before we close, express my appreciation to the members of the commission for your time and commitment to these issues as well as to the applicants who came to us today, including the city agencies, which have done a lot of work to create the affordable, all affordable buildings that we heard. And to members of the public who testified to share their views in all directions on these applications. We appreciate you. And of course, to the staff of City Planning for supporting today's hearing. So with that, this remotely held public hearing of the City Planning Commission is adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
You too. Have a good day.
The time is 12:25 PM.